Seven o'clock, we'll call the July 21st meeting of the Farmington Planning Board to order and we'll start with the I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, everybody, it looks like they've been here before, but the exit's over here and then when you came in, reminder to turn off all your cell phone pagers, probably had pager anymore, watches and all the rest and so that we don't get interrupted. We're holding the board meeting tonight on your procedures adopted by this board January 20th of 2021 and as our Farmington Board Resolution 326 of 2020 regarding remote attendance because Tim is remote tonight. How you doing, Tim?
Doing fine. Hi, everyone.
All right, all right. Where are you at, Tim?
I'm in Old Forge.
Old Forge, that's right, that's right.
Fourth Lake. You need the address? I've got it.
All right, so let's just see where we're going here. First up is approval of minutes of the last meeting. Everybody gets a chance to review those. Any comments? Do you have a motion to approve the meeting minutes? Moved by Chauncey, seconded by Doug. Any other comments? All in favor, shake a finger saying aye.
Aye.
Any legal notices probably said, John? I don't think we did. I just want to double check. Order of business, next one up is the PP 0704-21 final site plan and approval for the auto watch. Robert Marsonese from the old Country Club, sorry, Car Wash. Okay, go ahead and you might want to use the mic so the people online will yeah, so Tim can hear well if you would.
Good evening, Alex Anring with Costage Engineering Offices at 217 Lake Avenue, Rochester, New York, representing the auto watch application. I think Robert was gonna try to join us. I don't know if he's logged in or not, but I can speak him his behalf.
Okay.
I'll give you a quick rundown. Obviously, we've done before this board a few times preliminary site plan special use permit. And now back before you for final. It is the former Country Club Car Wash at the northwest corner of Murtensia and Route 96. The site plans submitted to you are primarily gonna look very similar. We did get a lot of the changes, big scale changes done, you know, through the PRC process and preliminary site plan. A couple updates, we did receive preliminary sign off. This part of the final submission package, we did include signage, which came up in earlier comments. One item to note, when we did originally submit the signage, the code enforcement office had the opportunity to review it. There was an LED sign originally included. We have taken that out of the package for now because it did need a variance. Obviously, if they wished to pursue that, they would come back to the CBA at a later time.
Okay.
I did get a couple of comments from town staff last week. They pertain to including the special use permit conditions on the drawings. Given the quick turnaround time, we did a re-signet, but we have no issues. Those would obviously be incorporated into the plan set for sign off. We also addressed the preliminary MRV comments. Those were in the final submission. I sent this afternoon a turning movement, which was one outstanding MRV comments. In column actually corrected me, there was a letter from June 30th regarding the turning movements. We submitted a template for that, just showing, you know, it'd be some sort of vacuum truck, because they have some reclaim tanks around the back of the building. But otherwise, there would really be no vehicle traffic behind the building. We did push the light pole bases back a couple feet. You know, in the instance that, you know, a bumper over a or a wheel trapped off of the, you know, they wouldn't have room, so. I think, I think that's about it.
Pretty much it.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, we'll turn over to staff. Ron?
Yes, I have prepared for your consideration a draft resolution tonight with conditions. They include the special use permit conditions that we had talked about as well as conditions from the court officer and zoning officer. Other than that, no other departments had any concerns.
Cool. All right, all right. So from our office, we're pretty much satisfied with everything. I do have one request that the planning board would add a condition to this. And that would be to actually widen your guys' driveway access to the full 35 feet. Just looking over this more, you guys obviously did provide this per our request. I would ask that you do that in the case that a fire truck comes off of 96, which is the most common route, and that way they can actually get one of their aerial apparatus into that driveway if they need to. Other than that, we're satisfied with everything else. If you guys could just update that for the when you guys start actually building out there and adjusting those driveways.
So just the new driveway, yeah, 35 feet.
Just widening it from, they are right now 27.4, so from 27.4 to 35 to comply with that.
All right, Dan?
Basically, other than, oh, looking at that driveway being widened touch, I'm good with it.
Cool. No comments from engineering. Okay, we'll go to the board. Chauncey?
Yeah, so they moved the light poles back. You said a backer truck would be, would pull around back to the
Yeah, you know, that's really all I could see. You know, anything would be smaller than that, you know. It'd probably be like a dually, you know, with the tank on the back, you know, while the vacuum hoses, but there, you know, it's not septic system, obviously. It's just for the reclaim of the potable water, you know, that the wash uses, so. I wouldn't see anything larger than that.
Yeah, I was just, and notice in the turning, it goes under the overhang, the overhang's up 12 feet, so.
Yeah, that was the first thing I looked at, the dotted lines, the overhang. You know, I think most of your low pass bridges are a half for tractor trailers, so I don't think that would be an issue.
And so, yeah, I don't have anything additional to this.
Doug?
No, neither. I think everything else has been addressed before.
Yeah, how about you, Tim? What you got? Of course, you can't see the turning one.
No, but I'm okay with this one as well.
Cool. Yeah, Chauncey and I were just mentioning earlier that it looks like that one turn in the upper left corner there where the truck is, it looks like it's just scraping the building there, so, you know.
Yeah, pushing the light pole basis.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a
Yes, I think you're okay there. Okay, I don't have anything else. Anything else from staff? Okay, we have a draft resolution. Did you guys get a chance to read it? You're okay with the condition?
We did it. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna add the condition that the zoning department requested to widen drive access to 35 feet off of Murtensia. So, John, you got that? Okay, so next item is draft motion to waive the reading and approve this resolution with that change. Moved by Doug, seconded by Chauncey. Any other comments? Court take a roll, call both please.
Chauncey Lloyd?
I'm
Tom Beats?
Aye.
Tim DeLucia?
Aye.
Aye, you good to go? All right, so you're working on inside there, cleaning down, putting in some new equipment there, so hopefully it won't be long.
Very exciting.
Yeah, it won't be long and we'll be back, we'll be up and running. Okay. This is the light meeting tonight, so the next item up for other board actions, we have a discussion about sidewalks and trails and bike lane master plan. Ron?
Yeah, can we just take maybe a little bit out of order some of these action items?
Okay.
First of all, the item we see, establishing a letter of credit for pre-put down homes projects on Redford Drive. The new owner of those townhomes projects hasn't submitted any documentation yet for establishing a letter of credit, and until he does, there's no pre-construction needed to be held and no action's going to happen over there.
So she has been pulled, basically.
Well, yeah, we thought we were doing it.
Right, okay.
On that. B, we do have a letter of credit release. You did receive two packets. The first one had a 60 cent error in it, which, thank goodness, you know, the town clerk caught it before it had been acted on and it would have to be recalled. So that resolution is for your consideration tonight.
Okay.
And it should end with the 0.00.
Okay, 0.60. So do I have a motion to waive the reading and the final LLC for pre-put down home projects and approve the resolution that's presented? Moved by Chauncey, seconded by Doug. Doug, any other comments? Court take a roll, call both please.
Chauncey Lloyd?
Aye.
Tom Beats?
Aye.
Tim DeLucia?
Aye.
Aye, okay, we're good with that. So now we're back to either solar or sidewalk?
Well, let's talk about solar.
Okay, let's do solar.
Completely out of order.
Ron, it's all yours. No problem.
As you know, the town board has approved the decommissioning plan and the letter of credit estimate and the maintenance bonds for the project.
Correct.
Somehow, the finance people, in looking at that approved plan, want to make some changes. And we have talked to them, our special counsel, and it makes sense that these changes occur. For example, the way it's written right now, the owner of the property has the right to decide that they no longer want solar and therefore can cause the solar to be removed. Well, you know, if certain people knew that, they'd not be buying the property today and whatnot, so. There are reasons for three amendments. And they'll be coming back to the town board with those amendments. I don't know how quickly we'll get the wording put together from our special legal counsel, but I'm just letting you know that that's going to be amended.
But it wouldn't have to come back to us?
No, no.
Especially since it's financial and that, it can go directly to the town board. Let them do their thing, removal.
Exactly.
Okay. Because I was hoping it didn't have to come back here.
Yeah, the other part of this is that they, our special legal counsel has asked the judge to allow oral arguments to see if he can move this along. And it's being considered now. We don't know what the dates of those oral arguments are gonna be, but John and I will be probably sitting there listening to the oral arguments, so.
Unless it's online, I'm not gonna be here.
Yeah, I don't care. I hear you.
But who needs to be here?
That leads me in the segue into the legislation on the solar page. We have drafted, okay? And as soon as the judge renders a decision and we can understand what that decision says as far as anything relating to the existing legislation, then we will, of course, be bringing that before you. Which leads me into the fourth segue, and that is the town board next Tuesday night will be setting a public hearing for August 10th for a extension of the moratorium for either six months. And the reason being is we want to have opportunity for the public to understand what's in this legislation, why it's there and not have to rush to judgment on something. So it went to the county this month. Just out of curiosity, county planning barely had a four to beat. During the meeting, one person had a lead, so they never got to acting on the solar. So I have checked with our legal counsel and my interpretation is correct. We can go ahead on the 10th of August and adopt local law because the third day's will have expired. But the county has private to make these reviews. So there's a four part there to solar. I just wanted you all to understand where we're at with the process.
And just so the board understands, and I think my understanding is correct, that as soon as they do get the decommissioning plan corrected and as soon as they post their bond, then they can set up a time with the building department to do a pre-construction meeting and directly begin to construct, because there is no, the court has not put a hold on the project at the time. So I just wanted everybody to know that things could start happening before the court even rendered a decision and the decision is on the seeker, that's what the, I'm mistaken, the the lawsuit is against our seeker process.
Your determination.
Our determination of non-significance.
Process required. Now, the judge could very nearly make a decision just on that, or he could begin to play that some element of the legislation needed to be changed because of whatever reasons he may find. So that's what we're waiting on.
Okay, that's solar. So that leaves us with sidewalks, trails, bike lanes, master plan.
Yes, okay, well, I will bring the drawing up front. I'll walk over there.
I have a little thing for you to take.
Yeah, I sent that to you previously.
And I forwarded it to all of the members.
Right, and today we received a bunch of drawings from MRV, which are over there on the table for your review. We stimulus, I don't know where you want me to put this.
Somewhere where, and you, I don't know, Tim can skip from there, probably not.
No.
Okay, wow.
We'll talk to it.
It's just a bigger size map than what you have.
Yeah.
All right, so what's driving all of this is the announcement by the State Department of Transportation last Friday. The CMAC grant program is open. I had a webinar that I had to take last Wednesday when the luncheon was on. Nice three and a half hour luncheon. I remember I had chicken. But we had to take that in order to qualify.
Right.
So what we've done is, as you know, we've been working on a master plan for sidewalks, trail connections and bike lanes. All of which are eligible items for the grant program. It's a federal highway transportation program. It's 80% federal money, 20% local share. Anytime you can spend a dollar and get four, it's a lot of people's attention. So with that, we've been working, we, Dan Del Piore, Lance Brayback, myself, Don Giraud, working on putting together a sidewalk master plan that basically shows, and I'm going to keep referring to it as a sidewalk master plan, it's more than that. But it shows the southwest quadrant primarily of the town where sidewalks currently exist, where we know that they are part of planned projects and where we know that there are void areas where previously, years ago, when development was approved, there weren't any provisions for sidewalks provided. So without having the opportunity to infill those areas, the town is looking for help from the Federal Highway Administration. Some of the areas, for example, what I'm pointing to here is Elizabeth Way and Murtensia. You know that there's sidewalks now that come down at the end of the townhouse project there. We're looking to extend those sidewalks further south across the manufactured home lot and connect to the sidewalks that are being put in by Myers Park.
Okay.
One of the conditions of renewal of the operating permit for the manufactured home parks, the one here on Murtensia, as well as the one here in maybe six in Murtensia, was that they would grant easements to the town across the boundaries of their property so that sidewalks could be constructed. And Dan's working on that. Over here on the table is a set of drawings that just came in today, this afternoon, from MRV. You can put them out if you want to look at them. Not necessarily have. What I'm telling you is that on August 3rd, there will be a public information meeting here in this room where we will have an opportunity, both in person and via Zoom, for people to understand the areas that we've identified and where we're going with the program.
What time are you doing that?
It starts at 6:30 on that Tuesday night. And hopefully by 8:30, we'll be pretty much over with an idea.
Depending on how many people show up, you should be for sure.
Yeah, exactly. Some of the key things that are happening here, as you know, they have put sidewalks in along County Route 41. They've included those sections there at the west end of Hathaway's Corners up to the creek.
Right.
Skipped over the creek and continue on Sodaro Boulevard. One of the priority areas that we are putting into the grant is a bridge crossing, similar to the kind of bridge crossings that we had put in between Monarch and Section 3 of Auburn Meadows. Then we have other areas here within the Hathaway Corners project where we know that sidewalks are going to be provided, both the public areas and the private areas of townhomes. We have sidewalks that will be completed over here in seven and an eighth end of Auburn Meadows, connecting to the Auburn Trail. We have shown the consider, can stop the concept, if you will, of the Farmington Point project and how sidewalks will tie in together on that. Town Line Road will have sidewalks, will have bike lanes, and it will be complete next year at a lead done.
That's the intention.
Okay. Couple of other things that are included here, we're starting to get the easements along County Route 41. As you know, we just did Tirola's project. We have a project coming in on Quintonshire that'll be coming to you, a new medical supply facility subdivision of that former Buffalo Hotel supply place, there's about five acres there that we'll be looking for easements across there, eventually to have everything. We already know that this property here on the north side of 96, Simmons Rockwell owns, they've given us they're okay to grant easements to connect there. One of the things that came out, is coming out in the Route 96 and 332 corridor study is the concern about sidewalks along 332 over last last
Oh, yeah.
Railroad crossing.
Yep.
Okay, and what we have identified here, instead of trying to figure out how to put sidewalks in along this very heavily traveled, very high speed freeway, is to come across from where Heatway Drive and Plaschino come together, the old abandoned right away of Murtensia and put any sidewalk connections up to collect. And then you can use the sidewalks to get into Farmington Market Center area, you can use the sidewalks to get into the area for convenience stores, things that people now walk along the shoulder of Route 332. They will get groceries and things of that nature. Then we also have the industrial park up here. List that we were showing easements being obtained all the way and connecting to this point.
Yeah.
Where you can get it. So there's 13 areas that we have identified. We're going to be determining how many of those areas we can put the sidewalks in the right way, how many of those areas we need easements still for. Any areas that we still need easements, if you don't get them within a very quick period of time, we're gonna have to reject because attracts, detracts from the feasibility right in. So all in all, we started this exercise back in 2003 and had headed over seven and a half miles of sidewalks to date in the town, and I can't give you what the the total figure is going to be, but it's going to be sitting in the middle. So the conference of plan called for this. We have adopted it. The other part of this that we're looking into is the CNAC because of the main street corridor that we now have being eligible for streetlights to be installed along the sidewalks and infilling the sidewalks where they've been used. In a nutshell, is what's driving this. We have to have a preliminary application into the state by August 17th, which, by the way, just happened to be the same night as Birdman Associates is targeting for the public information of the Roots 96 and 332 study, which I've encouraged you to participate in. Once we go through the preliminary review with the DOT, then we prepare the final, which is submitted by the end of September this year. After the September 29th deadline, the state reviews and will announce awards beginning in probably February, March of next year for those successful projects. We have taken their advice, we've added language in the conference plan. There's numerous pages in the 96 332 study that call out the need for filling in these links. We have incorporated how to tie the sidewalks to the trail connections in Peter Creek and to the Auburn Trail. And we have identified where bike lanes are already in our vision in the future. So it's a very quick process.
It's a very quick process. You guys have been working on this for years.
The oldest, it would be this fall when the announcement would be made, they made it quicker.
So one of the conversations I had with Ron and Dan is that if we have a project, and one that comes to mind is the Ouse Row Industrial Park. If we have a project where we if we have a project where we don't really need the sidewalks on-site, maybe we can have them build sidewalks somewhere else where we really need them. You gotta work it out, you gotta arm wrestle with them on how much and whatever, but keep that in mind as you go to some of these areas, I mean, the industrial park's probably a perfect example of one, we don't really need sidewalks in, but I don't want to give up sidewalks.
Right.
Period, we don't want to give them up, but if we can have them build, let's just say, three-fourths of their existence somewhere else, they save that money and we get them in where we need them, someplace where we already have easement, someplace to fill them, someplace to on our, uh, priority list, and I think that also, maybe not this time, but maybe next time we'll go toward our application saying, hey, we've actually not only we buy into this, we're actually attempting to get something filled in by use. So, it's just another thing for our, our board to detract from. I think you guys did a great job, I think it's, uh, impressive, uh, certainly the work that's been done, it's an accumulation of seven plus years or whatever you guys have been doing, this is, it's, it's coming right along, I think it's a great asset for the town. So I appreciate all the work.
Alright, thank you.
Hey. Okay, Ron, well, as you're walking back, we're gonna go to open discussion, go ahead, I'm sorry, just a second, yeah, go ahead.
So, are there gonna be, is there any plan to put up in like, uh, five hundred like, um, town maps? So I was just thinking about this, I don't think very many people know what's connected when it comes to where there are bike trails, where the trails connect, where the sidewalks connect with it. This would be, it seems like it would be worthwhile putting up in strategic locations, overall maps, like they do with parks and stuff, saying, hey, here's all the bike lanes, here's all the sidewalks, so if someone does want to, uh, use a bike or a walk to get somewhere else in front of it, and they can see how that's done.
That sounds like a down issue. Mr. Parks? Just something to keep in the back of your mind. That's a good idea, John.
Eagle Scout Project.
There you go, Eagle Scout Project, that was another good one, yeah.
We have started by, um, posting this, uh, master plan there.
Uh-huh.
On the town website, along with the notice of the meeting coming up, what it's about, and, uh, what, for the public, there will be, uh, Facebook, uh, dialogue, which I don't understand, but anyway, I'm not on Facebook. Um, and, and we hope to have, uh, a good turnout of people here on the.
Well, let's make sure we post it on Nextdoor, so, I mean, I love Nextdoor, you can post it on Nextdoor, of course.
I'm on there every day.
I don't need your posts.
I, I think it would be worth.
Oh, I agree, I agree.
For somewhere.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. Anything, Doug, for you, for this, on that?
No, no, I, I didn't play Tom's, I guess it is good, made something that, my son isn't voice that so much.
Yeah.
It's a possible, a house and guys that are also coming, that.
Yeah.
Cause he's a, a younger one, so might be an opportunity to, uh, do something like that. Maybe it's something to be, where, where I have like maps and portraits, so.
Tim, you got any comments on the sidewalk master plan?
It, it's impressive, um, I've been, you know, looking at it as you, as you're talking about it, and, uh, it's extensive, impressive, uh, great work.
Good, cool, thanks. Okay, next item up is open discussion, Ron?
I, I have, uh, nothing else to report, I've been working on a letter of support and resolution for the eighteen sixteen Quaker Meeting House, solidated funding application grant.
Cool.
That they're submitting, uh, to stabilize that building and that site. And then the other thing that we have is, of course, the schedule of the public hearing on the moratorium, and that local law has been drafted and will be introduced.
Cool, and then we're gonna get back working on code again at some point.
And comprehensive plan.
And comprehensive. Alright, okay, Augie.
I'm all set.
Okay, Don.
All set.
Holy moly, engineering.
All set as well.
Whoa, public.
Hey. I had one question on the sidewalks, that.
Okay, go ahead.
Right across from my house, they, well, they put the sidewalk up roughly to Hathaway, and Mariana was putting in on the other side of Hanson, but are they, is there any plans to complete the portion across my house? Yes. They leased up to Hanson, and I'd like to, hopefully you guys could get an easement to continue it on.
Yeah, Mr. Hanson has given us the okay for the easement.
Just tell him he'll take down all those, uh, dead trees in his yard, like. Those bugs have killed them all.
Yeah. Okay, so Andrew, you got anything else to say?
Uh, on, on Auburn Trail, I'd, I'd like to see some benches every half mile or so, you know, for us old guys can sit down and that's a great idea, because we do walk that section over by Alvin Rose. And I don't know if I want you to put this in the public record, but today, my wife and I got mortgage approval through N D R to, we want to build in the rain, the final phase of Auburn Metals, and get the heck off Conroe forty-one, and, uh.
There goes the neighborhood.
Yeah. This is probably for Augie, really, we're gonna build an RV bed next to the projects, and get water and electric service out there, but I also wanted to see if I could get approval to put a septic service out there. We grinded that.
Hey, I heard Chuck and Augie in the team.
Well, Nadia, Nadia Legret was going to be calling, checking out with these days.
Okay.
That's why I was hoping Dan would be there, right?
He's had a well-deserved vacation.
Because we're gonna do, we would do the typical four-inch like in any RV park, you know, with a screw-on gap, and then you have, and I have the according, I know New York State law says you have to have a secure connection, so I have I stopped in the RV, even the fifth wheel, it just screw on and, you know, so it can't leak out anywhere.
Yeah, we'll double check, you can double check with the team on that.
Yeah. Other than that, I'm sorry.
You're good, okay, I don't have anything else, I think it's been going pretty well, uh, we did vote with comments. Anybody, uh, board, anybody have any comments? Okay, I'm sorry, Ron's got some.
You might want to ask if anybody online is comments.
Oh, yeah, I will, anybody online have any comments? I don't think there is anybody on, is there anybody online?
There's two people, uh, Tim DeLucia and Van Del Piore.
Oh.
Ben Strathpeaking.
Okay, uh, we'll go to board, Chauncey?
I'm all set.
Doug?
I'm all set.
How about Tim, you got anything?
Nothing, no.
You enjoying it all forward?
Yeah, I'm looking out on Fourth Lake, it's beautiful.
Ooh. Alright, cool, okay, nothing else, then we've got a motion to adjourn from Chauncey, seconded by Doug, any other comments? All parents and pups saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, meeting is over, thank you, everybody.